Okay, we're all here. Might as well get going. So I am going to call to order the October 8th Board Meeting of the Urbana Park District, Board of Commissioners. We don't have anyone who's asked to, what, participate electronically, I guess. Right. All right, so the next thing is accepting the agenda. And we have a potential change. What's that? Anybody want to make?
Sorry. I would like to move that we remove, is this the time to?
No, we're gonna revise. We're gonna move Martin Hood up. Yeah, yeah. To accept the agenda, right, so.
I move that we revise the agenda to move item New Business A, Review of Action, to accept 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, 2019 CAFR by Martin Hood immediately after public comment, to allow the auditors to leave after their presentation.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment. Have we a public to comment?
She's one of our introductions.
Okay, so you're the introducee. Okay, so you have your own spot.
Come on, come on up, Jenny.
Oh, okay, so we, nobody's here, so.
Do you wanna wait till Elsie comes to introduce her?
I'm gonna do it. Elsie's actually at another meeting this evening.
Oh, all right, okey doke.
We have Jenny Swedberg. She's an intern from Eastern Illinois University. She's working with our Outreach and Wellness Department. She's been here about two weeks, and I'm gonna let her fill you in on what kinds of stuff she's doing.
Cool.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's so, it's so great to meet everyone. Like Corky said, I've been here for the last two weeks, working directly with Elsie and Ashley. I've had an amazing time so far. So the main highlight of the things that I've gotten to do while I've been here is they've tasked me with turkey trot, sorry. So I've been able to go out into the community, to some local businesses. I've gotten about six different businesses to contribute around $200 worth of donation for prizes for raffling off. So that's kind of a big thing that's happened since I've been here. I've also been helping, or I helped with BioBlitz. That was another event that I think went off pretty well. And I'm also learning how to input entries into ActiveNet to help get us up and running for next year's, I think it's for the, for the program guide? Yeah, thank you, yes.
Oh, wow.
So that's so far, it's been a lot of information so far, but it's going really well. And then also, we, we also had an info table that we did last Friday that, or I'm sorry, last Thursday, at the, it was at the Early Elementary Education Center, so we handed out some information there. So, yeah, so far it's going really well.
Tell them a little bit about your education, what your degree's in.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm studying organizational communication through Eastern Illinois University, and I'm going to be graduating this semester. Yeah, I'm very excited about that. I am really interested in that dynamic about organizational communication specifically because I've been a part of organizations where I've noticed that's where a majority of the breakdown happens, when you're trying to get things done, is, is in the communication. So that's why I decided that's what I wanted to study, and I wanted to bring it into organizations that I was gonna work in going forward. And then actually, specifically, I'm planning on getting a master's degree in public administration, which is why I was hoping this internship would give me some good experience working in the public domain. Yeah.
Yeah, you'll have great people to work with, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, sometimes you learn, probably learn the most from horrible people, but you learn a lot of good stuff from these guys, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I know it'll be really beneficial to you in the, in the long run. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Jenny.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right, so the blue on my agenda says this is the suggested spot to move Martin Hood. So Martin Hood, so to speak, in disguise. So which one is Martin and which one is Hood?
Neither. First of all, it's nice to be here. It's my first opportunity to be here. My name's Mitch Schluter. I'm the audit partner on the engagement that replaced Mark Siz from last year. So it's my opportunity to be here at the meeting. Greg normally comes, or has come in the past, and he had a conflict today. So you get the B team, at least on this side of the table. That side, you still get the A team, Maddie was here last year. So Maddie is our senior that was in charge of the engagement at the fieldwork level. Greg's our manager, and then I'm the partner. That's kind of the structure we had on this engagement. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Maddie have permission to go ahead and do the financial statements with you guys, but a couple things that I'm gonna take over. I'm gonna do a little bit of an introduction, which is what I did. I wanted to point out, when we get to it, and Maddie will get into the details, but there is a new GASB, Government Standards Board Statement, that was applicable for this fiscal year, related to other post-employment benefits, which is basically health insurance. In the past, that was recorded, the liability related to that expected benefit was recorded just in the footnotes, but because of the standard adoption this year, you actually have a liability on the books now that disclosed, similar to the pensions, that discloses that estimated liability of what that benefit is that you will have to pay in the future. So that's one thing we'll, that you'll notice that is different if you compare the reports to last year. Then I'll take over after Maddie does the financial statements, talk a little bit about a, a couple of the GASB statements that you're gonna have to deal with in the future that there's a footnote on, and I'll refer to that. And then I'll go over the post-audit communication letter, which is pretty standard stuff, but a couple things we'll point out there, and then we'll wrap it up and let you guys have any questions. Along the way, if you wanna stop us, raise your hand, say anything, and we'll answer as many questions as we can that you might have. Sound good?
Yep.
All right, Maddie, I'll let you take over.
All righty. I'll just get into this mini textbook we have here. Normal.
It does just get longer and longer.
It kinda does, yeah. Just more footnotes. They never take 'em away. They just keep adding them. Not really for sure why. But yeah, so first few pages outside of the index are just your organizational document, organizational documents, including your GFPA achievement, or Certificate of Achievement for FY18, which is in there, and then just elected and appointed officials. Not really gonna go through that. You guys have touched on that probably often. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started on the independent auditors' report, which are pages 10 through 12. I'll let you flip. But more or less, kind of the same structure as it's always been. You guys knock it out of the park, unmodified opinion, which is what you want. It's clean. It's noted on page 11, the third full paragraph on that. So pretty much what an unmodified opinion means is that your financial statements are proper in form compared to generally accepted accounting principles. So you guys are right in line with where you're supposed to be. Everyone keeps on top of it. It's great. I did wanna note that there are a few sections in here that we don't express an opinion, an audit opinion on. They're kind of in there for your own benefit. We do do a little bit of review. We compare it to what we have. Katie and her team usually prepare a lot of it, and we just make sure. Those are pages 1 through 9, your organizational docs. The pension and post-employment benefit schedules, which are pages 86 through 89, and the statistical schedules in the very back of the report, 110 through the end. Yeah, oh, the Urbana Parks Foundation, that's, comes from another auditor. We present it as a discrete component in your report, but the other auditor is the one that gave that opinion, which is, again, consistent with how it's always been in the past. So pages 13 through 26 are your MDNA. This just kind of provides a brief overview of the financial statements from management's point of view. Katie does really great of summarizing the 100-plus pages in the back in these quick 13 pages we have here. Like I said, fully prepared by Katie, and they're just a high-level overview of everything we give. I did wanna point out, we talked about this a little bit, but page 26 of those, Katie addresses the, how in August, I believe, you guys authorized to go purchase more alternative go-bonds.
Yeah.
So she mentioned that in there going forward, that that'll be something coming up in FY20, fiscal year 20. So then if we go to the meat of the report, your basic, your financial statements, nothing changed, like, view-wise, all the structures are the same. No new format changes. Just a few line items were added based on kind of what Mitch touched on earlier. So for starting on Exhibit A, which is page 27, there's a line now called, it's OPEB, what we call OPEB, Related Deferred Inflows, that is related to GASB 75 adoption, as well as on Exhibit B, page 28. At the bottom, there's a cumulative effect. This is 'cause we had to restate prior year because of this adoption, which is normal. Nothing on you guys. It's just had to be done to be in line with GAAP. Sorry to jump back to Page, to Exhibit A. There's also the restricted investments line item in your asset section. That's just related to the money you put away for capital projects. So that's new this year as well. So the main, between pages, sorry, 27 through 39, so all of the, what we call exhibits, so your financial statements, a lot of numbers changed, but I know you guys are presented with those regularly, so I'm not gonna go through anything drastic on that. So then if we move to page 40, this is your notes to the financial statements. A lot of words in here, but no, everything's consistent with prior years. There's a few new notes that I wanna address. One, of course, related to the new adoption. That's on page 78, Note 24. Kinda just talks about the adoption, not really in-depth by any means, just noting that it happened, that it caused some reclassifications, some restatements. And then Note 25 on the same page, 78, describes a few new standards coming into effect that Mitch will touch on here in a little bit. There also is a new note on the foundation side, which I don't know if you guys get those presented to you or not.
It's just in here.
It is, yeah, but they don't do it separate. Okay, that's fine. So the, since the foundation is a not-for-profit, FASB, separate board, issued an ASU 2016-14 for not-for-profit entities, which made them also have to do a few more disclosures themselves, which then makes your pages longer. So if you look at on page 84, oh, yeah, there, Note 8, which is liquidity and availability of financial assets. That's kind of the main, one of the main new ones, as well as the functional expense allocations. But this one is the bulk of what they had to present that was new this year. So if we go outside of the notes, starting on page 86 through 89, these are required supplementary information, things we don't actually put our audit opinion on, but they're required to be presented. Again, there are post-employment benefit plans and your pension, your IMRF pension plans. These are similar, if not the same, just number changes from last year. And then pages 90 through 110 are your individual fund financial statements. All these, no new funds, no new major funds, so they're all the same from last year, just updated numbers. And then pages 110 through the end are your statistical information. If, any questions? I know I flew through that really fast. There was, covered 100-plus pages in five minutes. Any questions? Nope. Okay. I'm gonna pass it back to Mitch to start going over the upcoming standards.
Okay. Thanks. Couple quick things to highlight what we, or what Maddie went through is. The MDNA, I encourage you to read it even over the financial statements. It's management's interpretation of the statements. It's not ours. So it gives you an idea of what they see as important, or what they have coming up, and what's comparable, and what's important to them. So it gives you a really good background on that information in a lot more context. So I would start there if you're gonna read it. The OPEB disclosure, I mentioned that, the footnote, or Maddie mentioned the footnote in footnote 16, page 72. It's about two or three pages longer than last year because of the new information, so take a look at that. It's gonna look a lot more consistent with what your pension footnote looks like, and show you over and underfunding and things like that. So I wanted to point that out. Also, I mentioned when I first started with the new GASB, you have to record a liability now related to that future benefit. You won't see that on Exhibit A. It's actually part of, individually on Exhibit A, it's part of the total. It's part of the, the debt total, and you'll see it as its own line item in a footnote. And that footnote is on page 59. It's footnote nine. So you will see that information there and know what the liability is that's reporting that ties into footnote 16, which has all the detail. So I know some people tend to wanna look at where that is showing up, and it's not in the exhibits individually. It's in the footnote, and then that footnote ties to the exhibit. So that's where you'll see that information. On the new standards, before we get into the post-governance letter, two new ones that are coming up. You'll see them on page 78, footnote 25. One is on leases, which is GASB 87. It'll affect you guys here in 2021. It's kind of consistent with what the business world is having to deal with also, mainly relates to operating leases. Right now, the way the current standards are written is any operating leases that you have, you can expense those lease payments in the year that you incur them, and then you just have to do a footnote disclosure of what those lease commitments are by year. The new standard says that we have to capitalize those leases. So we basically have to put a new asset on the books on Exhibit A. There'll be a leased asset and a leased liability. So it'll be recorded similar to way capital assets are, or similar to way purchasing an asset would look. So what the GASB is getting at is they want your balance sheet to show the commitment that you had that was missing before. And then the footnote will have more information on that, too. So it'll be showing the outside world what you're committed to on those leases in the form of debt. Okay? And that affects 2021. So we'll have to look at that year, what leases. We also look at, obviously, materiality and things like that. So people that have five-year copier leases, we're not gonna mess with that. It'd be larger land, equipment, that kind of stuff.
So it would be a monetary value or a time?
Yep. It would be a monetary. It's a very good question. I was talking earlier about that. What you do is you look at the future lease payments.
Uh-huh.
And what you're committed to, and then you would discount that back based on an interest factor that's consistent with your debt, and then you would book it today at what the present value of that is. And then you would book an equal asset value. You would depreciate this asset value like a purchase.
Uh-huh.
And you would record the, the lease payments against debt with the financing or interest component going to the income statement like you would in a, in a debt purchase.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna really resemble that.
Okay.
Okay? I don't think you have a significant amount that would impact that at this time, and I know we've got one at Brookins that we rent, but depending on what you guys do with that as far as building facilities, and also, as I mentioned to Tim, it only affects leases that are over a year. So if you have short-term leases that are a year or less, then you don't even have to record it. You just disclose the remaining information that you would have on that in the whole footnote, but you wouldn't have to capitalize and track it. The one that does affect you guys last year is the debt one, which is the second paragraph in that footnote, which is GASB 88. It will not affect your balance sheet or income statements, but the footnote disclosures that we make will, it will add more information that we have to disclose to the reader related to your debt. So you won't see a prior period adjustment or adjustment to a prior year or anything like that, like you would potentially with the leases, and like we did with this year, where we had to go back and figure it at the beginning of the year so we can show the current year. That one will just affect your disclosures and not really impact any of your financial information. So that's what's kinda coming. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we'll go on to the, what we call our post-audit governance letter.
It was tucked in the front of here.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of a little bit thicker document. We'll kind of go through this kind of quickly. It's pretty standard. It's the document that we have to give to communicate the results of the engagement to those charging governance, which is the board. The standard sections in here are the same that you would find in any engagement, whether it be for-profit or not-for-profit. They would have the same sections that are in bold. The only thing that's different in your case is there's some language that specifically relates to your engagement that we're disclosing in here. And the first one I would point out is on the page one, the first page of it, in the qualitative aspects of accounting practices. This is where we disclose the adoption of GASB 75 in this here. We don't give the same information in the report, but we're pointing out that's what has changed in your accounting policy. The estimates that you'll see, starting on the bottom of that first page, accounting estimates, you'll see them listed in four bullet points on page two of the letter. Those same four estimates are the same as last year. These are the sign, what would be significant estimates to the agency that could, depending on facts and circumstances in the future, change. So we're making, with management, the best estimate we can of either what they're worth or what the liability is right now, but they are subject to change based on other facts and circumstances down the road. And that's what this is disclosing here, so you're aware of those. Difficulties in performing the audit, there were none. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, this is where we disclose the back half of this letter, which is all of the journal entries that were posted. And the very last page is the one I'm gonna talk about. These, those are called past audit adjustments. They're adjustments that aren't material to the financial statements necessarily, but we have to disclose them because we didn't record them, and management didn't record, didn't have us record them. The one that's on here, it's the very last page, you'll see it, the very first column in dollars is $33,000. What happens with the pension standards is the actuarial report that comes out with your pension is performed early, early in the year following their year-end. Okay? In other words, they issue what the value of what they think all the assets are, what your portion is, what your liability, over and underfunded, and they send it out to all of the agency participating in the plan. About four or five months later, that program has to have an external audit, just like you guys do. When they do their external audit four or five months later, they may have subsequent information related to certain highly complex assets that are invested in the plan that may change.
Sure.
And so what they do is they issue a report that says, hey, the asset total that you guys used in your actuarial report is different today than it was four months ago when you gave all the information out. Well, the footnote that you see in the report is based on the actuarial report disclosures. They're the ones that give that all to you. So all we do typically when we see these differences, and everybody has them, and it depends on how much you have in the asset pool and everything like that when it comes to the pension stuff, this is basically saying when they did the audit, they thought that the assets, so it, so it says total assets and deferred outflows, there was an overstatement of the assets of $33,000 with what the agency posted and what's in the financials versus what was adjusted or found in the audit three months after those were issued. Now, keep in mind, we already disclosed this as a significant estimate. This is the piece I was talking to you further. If they would do another audit in August.
Be different.
There would be a different number. And then they catch it all up at the end of the fiscal year again, and we start all over again. But our responsibility is to at least disclose it to you if the number is, what is, the number is large enough that we think you should be aware of it.
Uh-huh.
And that's what all this is. If the difference was only $3,000 or $4,000, you probably wouldn't see it on this page at all.
Right.
So, and that's what that is, and since we disclose it as an estimate anyway, and since it's in flux all the time, there's really no point in time you can actually pinpoint the number. You're always using a guess.
Right. And we, and we have no control over this, right?
Correct.
This is just, this is, these are just the numbers. This is sort of a monetary view of the situation, and?
Yep. The only thing that it's doing is, we, they have to estimate what they think your liability is based on the assets they hold.
Yeah.
And if the asset values are going up and down, which they do daily, then, but at that point in time with the information they had when they issued the report, the original report, that's what we used.
Yep.
And all we do is kind of, we match it up with what the audit is to make sure it's close.
Mm-hmm.
But we still provide some information to the reader.
Gotcha.
In this case, the board only, not in the footnotes, because the actuary report is what we use in the footnotes.
Ah, right.
Okay? That's what that is. Disagreements with management, nothing there. Management representation. Everything else down here is all the same as last year. I believe that the decre, yeah, the one that's also different, that you're gonna see that's different than other agencies or governmental units, particularly related to you, is on page four. There's a section on the bottom that describes the discreetly presented component unit, which was performed, an audit performed by the other auditors.
Elsie, page one.
And it's on page, it says page four at the top.
Yeah, thank you. Because the rest of them all say page one, and I'm thinking.
Yep. But what's important to note here, and what it discloses to you guys here, is that that report, in the very last sentence of that paragraph, it talks about that, the audit, it was an unmodified report, which is a clean report, similar to what you guys have here. If it was a qualified opinion or a disclaimed opinion, we'd have more of an issue on whether or not we can include it in here, and we'd have to make more disclosures for it, or we'd have to go back and potentially ask them to fix whatever the problem was. So that is good to know. Even though we didn't audit it, we're disclosing it, but we're also telling you guys it was the same type of opinion. That's really all that's in here. All the pages in between, after the page four and the last page, are the journal entries that we posted for each of the funds during the engagement, most of which management gave us or provided to us. One of the things that's important to recognize, too, is we do not have an internal control letter, which basically means if we have to post enough adjustments where we find entries that create material adjustments to the financial statements and management was unaware of those, then that's considered an internal control deficiency.
Yeah.
Because it was found by an outside party.
Yeah.
And we have to disclose that it is a significant deficiency in control, or more, or if it's bad enough, a material weakness. We do not have any internal control deficiencies here, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies. So that is the A-plus standard of where you wanna be related to your control environment. And we review that every year as part of the planning and stuff. So that's it with the presentation. All I get to do next is the thank you, so. Anybody have any questions?
Great.
Looks really good shape, good form.
Next year, next year before they come, I'll send, I sent maybe a few years ago, like, questions for your auditors. I'll send it again, then you can have more questions for them, if you have any.
Well, and that's something we do in the planning, too. We always call, we have to do interview questions, and so we always pick board members, and we don't always pick the same one every year. We try to move it around and ask various questions. And that's part of how we design our engagement, too. Between your staff, we usually pick a staff, management, and then somebody on the governing board, and then based on their responses, it can lead us down a path of inspecting either certain accounts, or certain transaction types, or things they're concerned about, and we can hit the higher-risk areas in the engagement to make sure we do things that make you guys, management and the board feel comfortable with what, what's recorded, especially if there's new standards that are coming into play and stuff like that.
Well, I always feel like we're in really good hands with Katie and co.
Yeah. They make it go very smooth, I consider.
Yeah, yeah.
It was great working with Maddie and, and the team, and it all, I thought this year went really smooth.
Yeah. I think it was a transition year, too, 'cause it was my first time taking on the in-charge level. You've had Rebecca the past few years, so I think for that and the new accounting software, it was, it went a lot smoother than it, I even expected with the change in accounting software, so.
Same, yeah. It went really well.
We so appreciate our summer meeting. It's a good chance for us to get together and have you guys present things in a little more detail and ask questions, and just, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
And we'd like to, I mean, the invite is always out there. If there's ever something coming down the pipe, going to lunch, having a brief meeting, anything like that, to give you guys more comfort level on what direction you wanna go, or to ask questions on how it's gonna impact you guys, we're always here available for that. The only other piece we have left is the Illinois Comptroller, AFR. I think that's still in progress, right? Or is it done?
It's, it's ready for, well, yeah.
I haven't submitted it yet, but.
It's, yeah.
So it's not, it's done, but it's not officially submitted yet.
Yeah.
Got it, yep. that's the only thing that we've got left on our table, right?
Yeah.
Related to this engagement.
And that's three weeks out.
Yeah, the deadline for that.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're, got plenty of time. Otherwise, obviously, you guys helped us out a lot.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for that and have our staff. Thank you. Greg wanted me to specifically do that. That was on his list of A items that I had to check off, along with the rest of your staff. Everybody on your staff was very helpful when we had questions, very responsive. Makes it go a lot faster and a lot more efficient. So, thank you for that. Obviously, we look forward to working with you again. This is my first time through the, through it the first time to see you guys and meet you guys, so I'm a lot more acquainted now than I was when I first started. And it'll be a pleasure for me to do that again next year.
Great.
Very good.
Well, I hate to say we look forward to it, but we do look forward to it.
Yeah. We try to make that the easy one.
Exactly. It's part of our business.
Try to be the auditors you look forward to seeing.
The friendly auditors. Is that, is that our slogan?
That's right, that's right.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good night.
Alright. Okay, so, Auto Ellis in Wonderland Zone. Back to the real world.
This was the real world.
Yeah. Doesn't get any more real than that.
Oh, no. It was the real world to them. I feel like somebody's coming in and it's kind of like pigeon English. You're getting most of it. I'm getting some of it, but not all of it. It's a, it is, it's a whole, it's a whole nother language.
Yeah, it is.
I know.
I know. That's, that's why I'm not concerned and, and, you know, asking six bazillion questions, because you keep us informed enough throughout the year so that we know what's going on. And you don't have any resources yet.
Right.
Right? You have no resources yet, so we're... I mean, that's probably not the gold standard, though, is it, Katie? Alright, enough of this. UpDAC is next. Jean is not here.
Correct.
But her report is, although I don't have it, it hasn't popped up. It was a good meeting, as usual. A lot of information and, is this, I keep saying this, but it's a really good group of people. They're very interested in what's going on. They have a lot of good ideas. I feel like we're building upon strength each year with this, with each new UpDAC class. They, because we had kind of a low point there for a while. And we have a lot of self-nominated people, and it's just, it's, it's folks who are really interested and, and, and want to hear what's going on and want to understand what's going on. They want to make a difference. And Jean is doing a good job of running the meetings. I think it's just, it's working very well.
Our attendance is really well, too.
It is, it is.
It's always a kind of a positive thing for staff.
Yes, UpDAC generally outnumber staff, which is...
Right.
A good sign.
Yeah.
Yep.
For sure.
Yep. Alright. Number five, consent agenda. Alright. So, on our consent agenda, I guess the first thing I should do, and I'm going to go through all the things that are on it, and then we'll, we'll go up to the, we'll go to the next, the next section. What we have, approval of the minutes of the September 3rd board study session, approval of the minutes of the September 10 regular board meeting. And then in the monthly reports, we have administrative planning and ops, recreation. We have approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, which always sounds like one too many words. And then the action to accept the philanthropy, philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. And then the action to approve ordinance 2019-09 authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property per state law. Now, if any one of the board members wants to take an item off the consent agenda, we can certainly do that, and then we pass the, the rest minus that item.
I request that item F be removed from the consent agenda and moved to new business for discussion.
Okeydoke. So, F is being moved out. Anything you'd like to, you'd like to move? Alright, so then we are, we are voting on items A through E. And once we've talked, once we've voted on them, then we're done talking about them.
I move to approve items A through E on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed in the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
Alright, any, any discussion? Alright, we'll start. Meredith, is the roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, that's three ayes of three folks. Alright, Katie, you're back up.
Okay.
Okay, let me dig through this.
Hey, I'll touch briefly on the activity in the financial statements for the month of September for the Park District. So, we're through the summer now, so our busiest season's over. Our major revenue generating season is over. All the, the outdoor pool operations have wrapped up, other than the ongoing maintenance that occurs during the off-season. And all of our camps have finished up. So, we start to get a little bit clearer picture of how the rest of the year shapes up at this point and can make some better forecasts for the end of the year. So, I just thought I'd point that out. And as, it gets clearer and clearer until that last day. But, you know, it just, you get a good idea for it. At this point, we've received 67% of our property taxes, which is a little behind last year. I think they're just running about one payment behind. And they keep, instead of depositing the funds at the very beginning of the month, they're waiting until the end, or, anyway, it's a month behind for one reason or another. It's, it's just always like a week later than it, it should have been. So, but it's fine. It's not causing us any cash flow issues. I just hope, I thought maybe I'd analyze it a little more closely and call the treasurer's office and ask if there was a reason for that, and if maybe they could go back to the previous schedule, because it was always consistent before. So, I might have a conversation with them after the, after the end of the year of the property taxes, because we have a couple of payments left, and we'll just get through it and give them some feedback. Total revenues and transfers in for this period were $6,215,000. Total expenditures were $4,010,000, or almost $11,000, for a net revenues over expenditures of $2,204,000 at the end of five months. So, what that means is at this point in the year, we have over $2 million more in revenues than we had in expenditures. So, that's a good, healthy overage that gets us through the rest of the year, since we get most of our property taxes in June and September.
Right, right.
This page, this some one that we're looking at here is all, all of our funds except for the capital improvements fund. So, the capital improvements fund tends to cloud things up for us, because there's a lot of ebbs and flows in capital spending. So, if you looked at page two, this is just the capital improvements fund. And at this point in the year, we have $283,000 in revenue. Oh, my lines are off, sorry about that. Total expenditures of $10241. And we have excess revenue over expenditures as well in the capital improvements fund of $316,000, which is kind of rare, actually, at this point in the year. Usually, we're at a negative at this point. Some of that's because of the, some of the revenues we received that I'll talk about when I get to the capital improvements fund. But, we're also really gearing up for some major spending on these huge projects. And so, that's part of the reason, too. So, I think you're going to see it kind of flip-flop when, when we start really spending on the Crystal Lake project, especially in the spring and going into next fiscal year as well. So, right now, that fund has $2.2 million in fund balance. And I would say more typically in the past for the Park District, it's been closer to a million. And so, like, we've kind of racked up some fund balance in this fund, kind of waiting for this huge project to start. And then at some point, that's going to just flush. So, we're getting there.
We'll smash that piggy bank.
Yes. Yes, we will. And then lastly, on this page, I typically just point out that at the end of this fiscal year, or at the end of this month, at this point in the fiscal year, we have $9,650,000 in fund, ending fund balance for the entire district as a whole. So, each year, we've added a little bit, even though sometimes our spending and plan is to spend it down. But we just have great performance in the Park District. And so, even if you, as you look through the audit report, you'll see we added the fund balance again this year as well. So, I think maybe a topic I could bring as, as a supplement in a future board meeting would be our analysis of our fund balance trends. I think I brought that before in a chart. And so, I could update that now that the audit's done and give you guys a picture of where our fund balances are at.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Following this page are the major operating funds, the general fund, the rec fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. And if you don't have any questions about this report, I can move on, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have. Okay, moving on. I'll talk next about the treasurer's report. So, this report shows the position of the Park District on a single day, which is September 30th. So, by October 1st, it will have changed. But on this one day, this is where all of our cash balances were for the Park District. And this front page just lists them out by fund. It also shows which bank accounts that they're in. And we have a total cash on hand on September The top of page two of this report lists the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So, of that $11 million, we have 9.5 million invested in some form or another. The rest is basically in our operating account, making sure that we're liquid and able to pay our bills. There's no changes to inter-fund loans this period at all. They're, they're stable. And then, the listing on page three is all of our disbursements for the month of September, which totaled to $804,000. And some of this was because we paid $125,000 on the Perkins Road Fund site. So, I mean, this isn't, this is a little bit more than a typical month of September. And then that was also because we purchased and paid for the two Main Street properties out of the land acquisition fund.
Yeah.
So, when you kind of add those two items together, you kind of get back in the ballpark of a normal kind of off-month.
Took a while on those Main Street properties.
Well, they were, was it through, through September or was it the beginning of September?
Through September first. It was the lease arrangement.
Okay.
We purchased them ahead with that idea.
Yeah, we closed September 4th, I think, on the properties.
Yeah, I've been watching them as I've been driving by.
And lastly, I'll touch on the activity in the capital improvements fund budgets. There was very little activity this month, so this won't take me too long. We had some revenue in the 2019 budget for tributes and donations. And we also received $225,000 from IDNR for the saline Improvement Project. And the idea with that project, if you'll remember from the board meeting, was we weren't actually going to start on the project till we received the money. So, now that we've received it, we can move forward with that project, which is really exciting. In the expenditure side, there was just one line item that had some expenditures in it, which was improvements to the Meadowbrook Park House.
Excellent.
In the 2018 capital budget, there was only two items of expenditures. One of them was on water quality improvements for Crystal Lake, and the other one was on a survey for Blair Park. Down in the contingency section at the bottom.
Was that like a engineer survey or a, okay?
Yeah, for the, the grant application, the concept design.
Gotcha.
And in the 2017 capital budget, this is the budget we're currently spending out of for construction crew projects. And then also, there was a line item of spending for UIACs for our, for the Park District's capital share, share of capital expenses. And this $6,725 was our share of the painting of the slide tower during the shutdown. And there was no activity in the 2016 capital budget on the backside of this page.
My goodness.
With that, Derek and Andy probably have some...
No, we have to do the treasurer's report.
Sometimes I just rush right through, don't I?
I know, I know. You're just afraid we're not going to.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
I vote to accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, you're good to go. Alright.
Okay. I want to start and talk about an upcoming public open house we're holding. It'll be on two upcoming projects within Crystal Lake Park. It's October 15th from four to six at the Nature Center. The first project is the saline Habitat Enhancement Project, which is the IDNR funds that Katie had just mentioned for rock structures and bank stabilization within the saline branch, primarily right beneath Cannonball Hill. And we anticipate work, major construction to begin the first week of November, but there is potential for some tree removal to start after October 15.
Ah.
And then the second project we'll have going is our lake rehab project. We're at this point still awaiting 90% design level staff review, but we have plenty of information to still share and utilize the opportunity for our public open house to make sure we're informing everyone, neighbors, and putting out through social media and website, obviously. So, we're still looking to bid that this winter. I would anticipate we'd receive that 90% design level in the next week or so. And then basically for the meeting, it's more of a public information purpose. We're not seeking any specific, specific data or answers to any questions. It's really just a, an update of here's what's happening in the park. You're going to see some construction activity over the next year and just kind of provide that opportunity for people to come and talk with staff and engineering representatives.
Good.
Ask any questions or let us know of any concerns.
These are together topics in the same meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We thought it'd be better not to try to separate them. People might be confused.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
What was the time of that again?
Four to six.
Okay.
Our ITEP Park Street path project, we had a final walkthrough last Friday with our contractor, engineering, and IDOT went very well. All contractual work and our punch list items that we had reviewed previously were all completed, actually during the meeting. Officially wrapped up, technically. There were some screws that were going in the fence as we were walking through. But everything was done. IDOT was happy, so...
Oh, good.
There's still some paperwork that needs to get done from our engineering field representative and IDOT, and we still have some as well. And then we'll be evaluating landscaping throughout the next year, because we're still in that window where if we have any failures of plugs or trees, then we would get, in the spring, they would come back out and, and replant for us.
So, how are you feeling in general about that? Are you...
I love it. I think it looks great.
Great, okay.
It's heavily used. It was desperately needed. Yeah, it's a big win.
As we were doing our punch list, like, people were jogging by us, riding bicycles. It was almost like on cue.
And Ellen walked by.
That's great.
I will say that some of the landscape material that came in, particularly the native plants, came in pretty small. And we had some discussion with the contractor about it. And he says they're fully warranted. You'll be back in the spring to plant any that, that don't pop up. And I almost think it might be better. You know, they'll, they'll establish better in the spring, so.
Yep, yep.
But, yeah, great project.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well-received.
We hear a lot of people just saying how much more usable the park is with the Park Street and Broadway.
It's good. Oh, yeah.
It's good to hear.
Stay tuned. We have more coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Well-received.
Good.
I think we're reaching out to Carl as well to try and schedule like an official ribbon cutting.
Oh, great.
You know, obviously, the board as well and all the stakeholders of the project, and try to get something done the next couple of weeks out there, now that landscaping's installed.
Good, good.
Real quick on Liel Park path and parking expansion. We had our pre-construction meeting. Muser is looking to begin work this week. They're doing some geely locates, planning to mobilize an excavator. They're going to start with landscaping work hopefully this week, and then next week get into most of the path and concrete for the expansion of the parking lot. They're anticipating total work to be three to four weeks.
Oh, wow.
As long as we have good weather, I think hopefully we'll move right along here. It should be relatively quick project. Unless there's other questions, I'm happy to answer. That was all I was going to update on tonight.
Sounds good. Tim, I think you're next.
Yes. Well, starting out, just want to thank Katie and the accounting staff at the cottage for the audit work. It's every year. It's ongoing. It's every day. Things I think about is at our capital improvement meetings, we're making quick, rapid decisions of how to handle money and donations and a grant, and making sure it gets assigned, and knowing that all the paperwork follows and it's all in order. So, it's really wonderful. Also, I want to thank Karen, the planning team, for leading us through the strategic plan. Another great achievement to get that kind of up. Again, it's not done. It's just beginning. And so, that's when staff gets really invigorated, because the implementation is what we're most interested. Certainly, the process and the information is important as well, but it's kind of go-time, so we're excited.
Yeah. Can I just interject there?
Yes.
That I think that it was a great idea to do it the way you did it. And the product, the end product is terrific.
It is.
I think that was, that UpDAC came to that conclusion. They were impressed with it because it wasn't, you know, thicker than the auditor's report.
Exactly.
It was easy to read. It was easy to understand. And yet, you didn't feel like there were any gaps and things that you didn't know about.
I agree.
And it gave you a nice clear picture of what was going on, a general idea of how much things were going to cost. And I think the idea of not bringing in somebody from outside who doesn't know us as well as we know ourselves.
Yeah.
Not only saved money, but it gave us a better product.
Right.
In the end. But that's because, as I say, you guys are not blinkered. You're... You're, you've got a really wide vision of what's going on. I think if, uh, if this was done by another group that were, had much more tunnel vision, you wouldn't have as good a project, or good a product, and you wouldn't have as good a long-term outcome. So, all credit goes to you guys.
We agree.
Just for a lot of different reasons.
I think one of the biggest benefits is that probably everyone in this room, certainly UpDak, could speak about the strategic plan. Where I'm not sure we could easily say that before, you know, even if somebody could tell us what the main, four main areas are, I think they could. And that's a huge difference because I know last time, you sort of had to put it in a format that others have, you know, sort of crafted, and, you know, if you didn't identify with that or couldn't understand it, you were sort of left outside looking in. So now I think we've got it pretty well, you know, transparent.
Right, and the nice, and the nice thing is that, um, not that, not that we need it, but it's much easier for people to hold their feet to the fire because they know
Right.
what we're thinking about doing and what we want to do and what we want to get done. And it's not buried someplace in a, you know, page seventeen, appendix B.
Right.
And I think that's good for the community.
It is.
Yep. So I congratulate you all because I think it was
We're very pleased.
a good step, and it's, was beautifully done.
Great. Just wanted to highlight some of the UPD events we had in September. Obviously, the Jazz Walk and the, uh, Urbana Parks Foundation event was very successful, a lot of attendance, good time by all. The, uh, Scarecrow Fest at Ambucks Park, held by the Ambucks Club, is their, one of their annual fundraising and big events. Terrific event, beautiful weather, about a thousand people at that. So they, they definitely attract a lot and do a great job. The Bio Blitz was a huge success. Want to credit the Nature Center staff for working that into their fortieth anniversary and, you know, probably could have picked easier things to do to have fun. Cake and a celebration would be a good idea, but taking on a really big project that's really gonna provide lasting benefits and information and encouragement for, uh, young scientists in the future. Had a great day at the World Peace Day, um, in the Silver Water Neighborhood, uh, working with Cranert and others, um, working on the peace poles. Had a really good turnout for that, a lot of fun. And just want to report the, um, event at Meadowbrook Interpretive Center by Deek Weaver last Friday night. The Tiger Event was just terrific. We had over about eighty people that attended that. It was a special performance for the park district. Because we had been so helpful and engaging in his previous, he had offered us and Allerton both, uh, sort of a special performance. So it was really, it was interesting. I don't know, I don't think tickets were sold. The word of mouth just got out. It was in the paper twice. But there was a ton of people. Standing room, I stood the whole time in the back. So it was very good, and everyone stuck, stuck around and visited after. So it was really well, well-attended and well-done. Just a follow-up from Commissioner Del Coleman. Um, I think Elsie's working on, um, some demonstration events for Tai Chi in the outdoor environment.
Oh, cool.
The idea, um, was to try a couple of the instructors with the idea of demonstrating and hopefully attracting more attention.
Yeah, great.
Like, I'm sure the outdoor yoga people see it. Hey, maybe I'd want to do that, too. So staff's working on that. Appreciate that. Uh, let's see. Um, oh, I also wanted to mention, um, there's gonna be some traffic counts done for the Kickoo Rail Trail, the State Planning and Research Grant. Wanted to thank the park district, Forest Preserve District, and city, and RPC interns. They're also gonna be volunteering to do the traffic counts, which will save us a lot of money, um, on that. So we do appreciate all the agencies coming together and, um, having, allowing access for this part of the project, um, by their interns. Good, good experience for them as well. Let's see. Had a number of really good meetings and new connections this last month. For the KRT, I spoke at Cynthia Hoyle's class. Her urban planning class is doing a additional study on the Kickoo Rail Trail. Sunday, I think they wrote it, so we'll be interested in learning what, uh, information they can put together. Spoke at the RST, uh, program for Julian Wolf, talked about visioning and strategic planning. Corky and I both had separate meetings because we couldn't get together with one of the RST new faculty, uh, Sharon Zuo. She's an expert in fee structures as they relate to community benefits and values. So we thought after we do our kind of focus groups on aquatics, we would like to engage with her to look at, you know, how do we reexamine this, what we're charging and getting a reasonable value, and how, how do we think about that? Could be some additional on- ongoing work. Um, she's very enthusiastic and quite an expert in that area. We also made a new connection with, uh, Dream House, Tracy Dase. Uh, you may be familiar of his work. It's working with young people aged five to twenty-four-year-olds. Um, Dream House stands for Driven to Reach Academic Achievement for Males. So it's, you know, targeting African-American males. Um, we're looking at intern, internships and workforce development. Basically, they have, uh, federal dollars that they have, limited dollars, but they can help put people to work, young people. So we're looking at ways, how do we work together and place people either in internships or in actual paid positions, um, here at the park district? So another outreach
That's good.
engagement. So we're real excited about that. Um, Derek and I met with Elliot Brinkman. He's the new executive director at Prairie Rivers Network. So that was wonderful. Got to find out what they're doing. Their annual event's coming up, um, at the Ia Hotel in October. Um, huge event, and so, um, just got a chance to talk about some internal things. And, um, we know they're interested in urban water as well. They're a statewide organization. Certainly, if they had the time and the staff and resource, they could probably help every community in Illinois. But they're ob- obviously working on the, some of the bigger, you know, the most important, um, issues. But they're definitely aware and interested in what we're doing at Crystal Lake and our stream restorations and things like that. So it's always good to talk with them.
Are there grant opportunities through them? Do they have?
Not directly through their organization, but the ones that they have access to, we certainly always talk about opportunities. Again, I think they're probably, uh, ac- able to access some of the larger grants, you know, for like Lake Michigan or some big river studies, things that we might not be able to tap into.
Yeah.
But certainly sharing information and, you know, for a statewide organization, they have a lot of local interest and a lot of membership, right, right here in Champaign County area. So we're very fortunate to have access. Elsie and I attended another meeting, um, on campus. There's a visiting artist named Seetu Jones. He's very focused on performance art, sculpture, and is interested in engaging community art projects with underrepresented individuals. So we're hoping it's moving into a project, and so we're gonna continue to meet. Could be very unique, very exciting. One of the things Seetu did was, I think he put together the, it's the, was the largest community dinner. And they had like a three or four hundred foot long table, and it was farmed, uh, um, table food, and it was about food security and, you know, had a real strong message on climate and environmental ethics. So could be something very creative and different and interesting, um, like that, we hope. Uh, let's see. Just wanted to remind everybody, the, um, UPD Senior Club Holiday Lunch is coming up Tuesday, uh, December tenth, at eleven thirty at the Round Barn. If anyone's able to join us, let us know. Kelsey will follow up with you to get you registered. I know Corky and I are attending at least.
It was nice to have the invitation out so early.
It is, and I noted that, too.
I thought it was terrific.
It helped me a lot, too, to get it out there, so I thank Janet for getting, getting that to us. Corky and I are also gonna be meeting with, um, um, CUSR staff to begin talking about any, any space needs or, um, kind of facility needs with, uh, proposed health and wellness analysis that we're taking on. Also talk about the Springs, Spring Award Banquet, looking for an Urbana location. We'd like to start alternating it, uh, hosted in Urbana if we can do that. Also want to mention, the next event for Special Rec is the Cupcake Five K Race at Parkland. Sunday, November third, starts at, well, people gather around eight AM, eight to eleven. The race kicks off a little bit later, but it's always a well-attended event. Look forward to that. And did want to mention, if you, I think I sent the note out to you about the Chambanor Seniors new website. That's our Center for Health, Aging, and Disability. We're real excited. That was one of our big products that we were trying to launch. Got a lot of support, um, in doing that, and UPD is now filtering in and adding events and activities on that website. So we're actually a user and, um, getting some mileage out of promoting our events and activities. Can answer any questions if you have any. It's busy. Obviously falls our second busiest season with events and people coming back to, uh, campus and, uh, a lot of fun things going on.
Can I add just one, one thing?
Please do.
I know board members got an email about it. Mark sent it out, but we have a new, our new websites up and running.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, still working through a few tweaks, um, but I encourage you to look through it. And if you have, if you see anything that needs addressed, let, let us know.
You know, websites, it looks really great, but we always assume it's work in progress. You know, there's something that'll be updated, or, you know, a few months down the road, we'll find a new thing to start working on, but appreciate that effort.
Still using the same firm?
Same firm, yeah, yes. American Eagle.
Yeah.
That's all I had. Can answer any questions?
All right. No questions. All right. Thank you. President has no report because he's in Cambodia. Um, so that takes us down to liaison reports. Finance Study Group.
We met.
You are it.
Yeah, we met, uh, September twenty-sixth. We talked about the twenty-twenty tax levy, about the twenty-twenty capital improvement budget, and the twenty-twenty health insurance quotes. We'll meet again on November first.
How were the health insurance quotes?
They were good.
Oh, were they?
I mean, they.
They were good for us.
Good for us.
Good for us, yeah. Very happy. Let's put it that way.
Good.
And they've since been signed and finalized.
Oh, oh, great.
That we've had in terms of increase in some time.
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful, because it was such a heartbreak last year.
But we have quite a lost history, and it wasn't an in, it was not the increase we deserved. Let's just say that.
Oh, we won't talk about it anymore then, in case they come back to us, yeah.
Than we expected.
Yes.
Right.
We deserve the best.
We deserve the best. No, it was, we, we are very pleased, and I think Health Alliance is working really hard to retain local groups.
Oh, good.
And that showed in the quote.
Great.
And we're, we're happy because all of our plans get to stay the same. You know, a lot of times we, the last several years, we've gotten these fifty percent quotes, and the best we can do is go back to our plans and just whittle them down.
I know. It's been awful.
And so to be able to have some consistency for a year and to not have to grind all of that out for months and months.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've never had a quote in September.
In September. It's just amazing.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I didn't, I wasn't thinking about it.
Get it resolved in the fall early is, it's a luxury.
It's such, it's such relief. We're really happy.
Right.
So it's good all the way around?
Right.
Yes.
That is, that's great.
Definitely want, you know, staff to have time to learn about the plan, any changes. And when it gets compressed late into November, that's just really nerve-wracking.
It's a busy time of year anyway to have the
Right.
Yeah.
More, more thing to
Right.
And it is an important thing. You can't just say, oh.
Exactly.
So we'll be, uh, we'll have a nice, you know, relaxed, open enrollment window, and it'll be great.
Excellent. I'm really glad to hear that.
Very pleased.
All right, you are, you're hit for the, for the policy study group.
So we last met in May and are looking for, um, opportunities, meeting times for probably again in January or February.
All right. Foundation.
Foundation. The way the schedule fell,
Yes.
we have not met since, since, uh, our last board meeting, so.
Makes it easy.
We'll meet Monday.
Right. And, uh, LaShonda and I did meet, as we reported last time. Um, we're just coasting now until we have to make the next, the next set of decisions. And I think everybody's been quite
Right.
happy with the, the choices. UpDak seems to be content with what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that takes us up to old business. We have no old business removed from the consent agenda. So.
We do have.
Oh, you, you.
Well, or is it new or old?
Is it old or new?
I can't afford to be new.
It's new.
I thought it was new business.
I thought it was new.
Under the, uh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, okay.
Area where.
Right.
Last page.
F.
F.
Yeah.
Action on any new business removed from consent agenda.
Okay. All right, so, well, let's put that at the last. Let's run through everything else and save that till the end, shall we?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so, A, review of an action to accept the twenty-nineteen comprehensive annual financial report.
So, um, I think that you're fine, I don't think you actually have to, like, I think you still have to do the motion
Mm-hmm.
to accept it, but if you have any other questions, not at all.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I'm, sorry. I moved to accept the twenty-nineteen comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR for the year ended April thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Right. Any more discussion? Do we want to talk about it anymore? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's not an aye. So we move on to action on resolution, twenty nineteen oh-nine determining the amount to be raised by taxation.
It's that time of year again. Katie's got some really good information put together about the proposed levy.
So, this is the same thing we do every year, but I think it's important, especially if anybody's watching at home, that we kind of give some background about why we do this. So the way that the levy works is that taxing districts have to request the amount, uh, they would like extended for property taxes in the fall, but those figures are not finalized until April or May. And so it's kind of a guessing game, um, because you don't know what the final equalized assessed values will be for the district until April. Um, and in fact, we didn't know them until May this year because of the delays at the county. So, um, it's, it's tricky because we do base our estimates off of some information that we have at the time that we do the calculations.
Right.
But that's why we ask the board to pick an option such as a twenty percent on top of that estimate, or twenty-five, or thirty. Um, because we, the initial estimate is based on what we know, but because of the uncertainties of the equalized assessed value, and especially with the litigation that's currently happening with all of the hospitals, that we can't predict what new value
Right.
um, we should or should not capture, um, until those figures are finalized. And so, um, and, uh, the PTEL law, the, uh, tax cap legislation restricts the park district from having an increase greater than the change in the CPI, um, or five percent, whichever is less. And the change in the CPI this year is one point nine percent. So for all the taxpayers listening, um, your own taxing bill will not increase more than one point nine percent typically. Um, that can change depending on changes in EAV. If there's a large taxpayer gets pulled out or put in, then that pie shrinks or grows
Right.
depending on who, how big your slice is. But, um, the amount we receive this year doesn't grow more than that on the base of what's remaining in the district. Um, but the new property that comes on, there's a, we get a one-time increase for those new properties. And so it's important that these twenty, twenty-five, and thirty capture any new property available to us because going forward, we don't ever get to capture new property again for those properties that come on. So, um, so presented to you, uh, here in the worksheet that's attached, are three options, which is basically our probable levy amount plus a twenty percent, twenty-five, and thirty percent increase. And staff recommends that you select the twenty-five percent increase because the twenty percent increase does cover, um, in case of the hospitals being added, but, um, it doesn't, uh, give us quite a bit of wiggle room. So the twenty-five is a little bit more comfortable. The thirty might be overkill, but it, in the end, PTEL comes in and tells us what we get. So if you picked twenty-five or thirty, the outcome will be the same for us, so.
Right, right.
Um.
But it's what's going in the box that's.
It's going in the box.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is going in the box. So, um, the amount that goes in the box is, well, it's all of these amounts, but the, it'll be the, um, if you pick the twenty-five, it'll be that nine million seventy-five
Right.
two seventy-five there at the bottom, if, if that's what the board chooses. So the reason we ask you to have a resolution this month is because this is basically what we wind up publishing in the black box, and there's a window of time that you have to do that before, and then you have to have a public hearing the following month. Um, the black box announces the public hearing, and then after the public hearing's been had,
I see.
we accept the tax levy.
Okay. Would we normally have gotten this information at the study set, the last study session? Because I seem to remember seeing this once, and then, am I right?
Typically, we do it at the October board meeting is our usual.
I think.
We have over the time, maybe.
I thought we always had sort of a warning when we talked about it.
We might have had it.
I always think that we might have done it at the study session also.
We can go back and look.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was surprised to realize that we're having to make up our mind
Yeah.
tonight, because I thought we usually had it. I mean, if that doesn't, is, is, that's what you're remembering as well, that we saw it once and then we had it.
I kind of felt like that, too.
Okay.
I know we've done it different over the years, back and forth, but we can certainly, you know, if we have time and can do it that way.
And I realize that time is.
And if that's what the board prefers, we can certainly try to do that in the future.
Yeah, I, I, I would. I mean, it's, it's.
I would, I would also.
Okay, and I think.
Yep.
Yep, she's nodding too, so.
You know, I think this, the part of our discussion where we apologetically, you know, present it, and it's, it's difficult for staff because we don't have any choice or opportunity to change the system, but essentially, we're, we're putting the cart in front of the horse and asking the public to trust us that we're gonna do the right thing. Um, obviously, nobody would make a decision financially. You get the financial information many months later, but that's what's presented to us. And there's probably no effort, you know, that park districts are gonna be a blamuster that would change that to get it in more real time.
I mean, we have no option. This is how it has to be done.
I think it's important to point out, too, that the park district is very limited in our revenue raising capabilities. So seventy percent of our revenues come from property taxes, whereas other municipalities have a lot of other taxing abilities that we don't.
Right. Right.
So I think that's one of the other reasons that we tend to levy on these higher sides just in case of new property and changes in EAV because we don't have any other options to earn revenues. So.
And if we were.
Therefore, this was extraordinarily useful. You haven't done this for us before, have you?
Yeah, it's always on the backside. And I just keep adding a year every year to it.
Well, I think, but this, this is, it's good to have it all laid out because you can, you could, if somebody is really unhappy, you can say, well, look here.
Yeah.
Even though we asked for 25%, we got.
We got 4.8% last year.
Right, right.
Right.
So.
Exactly.
Another point the public should be aware of also is, you know, if we didn't sort of overarch and put a large umbrella out there to capture, if we would miss something, we would forever miss it. So it's not, oh, we'll catch up next year. It's no big deal. We lost a little money this year. We'll make up. It's, it's, it doesn't work that way. It's, you're locked out.
Yeah.
So we're always encouraging the largest number within reason.
Right.
Yeah, the next year's tax levy is based on the current year's actual tax extension. And so they take the tax extension you received this year, times it by the CPI. And that's the amount you get on the current EAV. Then the new AV comes in on top of that.
Yep, yep, yep.
I, I do think seeing it in the study session gives us more of a chance to discuss with you what, what your feeling is. And you've, you've expressed that tonight, but I think.
Sure. Yeah, and, and we were a bit constrained in getting a chance to present it. We did talk about it at finance in a lot more detail. And we went through a lot of the worksheets and calculations that go behind these figures. So, so we did do it at that level as well. But I'll try to make sure that we have a study session about it and.
That's, that's good. I think, I think we all would appreciate that. All right, so are we ready for a motion?
I guess I, I want to say one more thing.
Oh, okay.
If the board is more comfortable and would rather think about it for another month, that's okay too. Because we're always ahead of the game.
No, no.
A lot of districts don't pass their extension documents until December. And we always pass ours in November.
Yep, no.
And so we're always the first black box out of the box. And that is, you know, a little tough. Other districts are usually several weeks behind us. So. But I did talk to other taxing districts. And this approach of the 20, 25, and 30% is the same approach that they're looking at using again this year as well. So with the uncertainties that are out there, we just.
It's, it's the smart way to do it. It just, it's, but it's a complicated enough thing that it's difficult to educate the taxpayers. So that's the, that's the really.
Yeah, and we, and the last couple of years, I do think we've gotten one or two calls. Occasionally, we get one or two, but we're usually able to talk to them and explain the process. So.
And they've never come with pitchforks here, so.
It's usually the black box issue when they see it and, you know, they should call.
Somebody new that has, that.
That's right. As much as we try to continue to repeat it each year. I think it's, it's just one of those things when you see it.
And I welcome the call because I think it's an opportunity to educate and try to teach people about the process though. Because it is a very confusing process.
And it's not just us. I mean, it's MTD, it's everybody else. So that, that what they learn from us, they can apply to their whole.
The worst part is when they say, but that's crazy. Can't, can't you fix it? And we have to say, it is, it doesn't make a lot of sense to us. And no, we're probably not going to be the group that can change it.
Yeah, I think we have enough.
Bigger and different groups, you know, statewide that would change all that.
I just want to say, it doesn't look like there was an October study session last year either. So it must have been an executive session that we talked about it. Because I know we did use to talk about this.
Okay, all right, yeah, because.
Another opportunity also, however.
Oh, that's interesting.
And maybe we, well, I mean, we can't talk about it in an executive session, so.
Or maybe it was a presented.
Or maybe it was, we, because a lot of times when we're putting the agendas together, we're going off of last year's. And so maybe we didn't do it last year either, but we have in all the prior years. So we'll just try to make sure it happens in the future.
Good.
That way it gives us more time if we want to put it off to the next month or whatever.
Yes, that is true. That is true.
Well, I move to approve resolution, resolution 2019-09 determining the amounts estimated to be necessary for the 2019 levy payable in 2020 upon taxable property
Second.
All right, I think we've had our discussion. Does anybody want to add any last thing before we vote? All right, roll call vote required for this amount of money. It seems reasonable. Roger?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Kado, three ayes, no nays. All right, C, review of preliminary 2020 capital budget.
Finance time of the year.
Yep, this is another regular October item. It's our draft capital budget for the next year. Similarly, two years past, our capital team reviewed next year's budget, five-year capital plan in our prioritized list. We reviewed the 2020 capital draft and the five-year at the last finance committee as well. And we have the preliminary 2020 capital tonight, which you don't have any action on, but it'll be brought back at the November's meeting for approval. But I can walk through some points. And if you start looking through the expenditure section in the 2020 budget, this capital year is really focused on Blair Park and our grant application that we have currently. But you'll see a lot of the normal budget lines here, starting with vehicles and equipment. This year, we have $160,000. And that's for replacement of our custodial van, a half-ton and quarter-ton pickup truck, wide-area mower, and a tractor with pole mower attachment. And that tractor is another one of those museum pieces. I like to call it from 1991. We actually have a full schedule for vehicles and equipment. We had a staff review of that schedule. And years past, we've actually pushed some back just because conditions improved on vehicles. I think since we've had them under, undercover. So I know the, the van and those two pickup trucks, I think were actually originally two years ago. And they've just kind of been pushed back. So they're definitely due at this point.
But on the whole, we're keeping up pretty well.
Yeah, and so it's kind of a balancing thing too when we're looking at the whole schedule. Because, you know, you, you tend to kind of want to push things back. But then if you start doing that, then you start looking ahead and you see, well, in 2023, we have $300,000 of vehicles and equipment. So it's kind of trying to spread it out as well so we can kind of keep funds available for other projects too. Moving down the list, we have our normal hazard tree, construction crew project, technology lines. The operations and recreation, small equipment, I think for the last two or three years have been $5,000 each. Before that, they were $10,000. We were doing that to start stockpiling money for upcoming large projects. This year, we're starting to move them back up to their normal funding level of $10,000 for each.
Andy, is the hazard tree work less than, it seemed like it, it's used, used to be like $75,000. Does that mean we've?
I think, yeah, I think.
We've sold all the, the endal ashwork.
Yeah, and then now it's kind of just tailed to.
Just trees that are old and need work.
Yeah, we have.
It's either really, really large ones that require a crane or a lot of stump grinding.
Those guys will never be out of business, will they? There'll be something else coming in, yeah.
Tim sent me a new disease just this week.
Oh, no.
We have tornadoes go through and.
Well, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Moving down, we have our normal mechanical replacement. That's something that we have every year, $10,000 that builds up. And then we use as we have failures in any sort of mechanical items in our facilities.
No, would that, this, this pipe thing that we're looking at, would that cover, would that money come out of this kind of line? The sewage thing, wasn't I reading about sewage line? Is that?
Sewer line.
Oh, I suppose that's not really mechanical, is it?
Yeah, right.
HVAC equipment typically.
Yeah, heating and cooling. Yeah.
Interesting place to put sewage, but I'll go with it. Okay, sorry.
Regular trails, $40,000 is geared towards Blair. Hardscapes and fencing is normally a $40,000 item. As part of our strategic planning process, actually, our operations supervisors brought up a point and it became one of our goals was to be able to take care of what we currently have. And there was, there's quite a bit of need for basically our parking lots, hardscapes. So we have planned in the next five years to really increase that number from our normal 40 to $150,000 each year and start prioritizing what needs addressed first and taking care of our, our current hardscapes. We'll also use, a portion of that was set aside previously for CLP, the $40,000 normal amount. And you'll see the UIAC capital and Blair Park playground and the amount of $100,000. So if we, I just wanted to note, if we are unfortunate and don't get the grant, we would still have some funding in place that we can do what's our highest priority items. And what also came about from our public meeting, which is the playground and the path work. And so we have money set aside here that would address those needs as well.
For comparison, what was the ballpark-ish cost of the new Phillips Playground?
The equipment was $73,000. And after Keith's work and stuff, I think it was around $83, $85,000. We have a CLP phased rehab, and that's an item that will appear through 2022 for $150,000. And our idea here is that we'll stockpile for these three years so that when our current lake project that's going to bid this winter wraps up, that won't address the entire lake edge. We're trying to protect some areas around the lake. So in a few years, once everything else gets established, we can come back in and then address what's remaining from our phase-two rehab. And then we have a general contingency that will usually keep around $75,000. And then the remainder, which is approximately $50,000, would then go towards the Blair project as well. And a portion of our ADA funds would go towards Blair for any accessible items. So there's no action that you need to take. It'll be back next month. But if you have any questions now, I'm happy to answer.
What, what didn't you do on here that you would have? I mean, what, what kind of, what kind of things didn't get on that you would have liked to have seen on here?
Well, we have a whole prioritized.
Well, I, I know, and it's eight miles long.
We were scrapping pretty hard on Blair Park to find our mat for the grant, but we made it. There's a few things that are still hanging out there that are going to be things that we seek donors for. We've had some success recently talking to a donor about a project. So I think probably Blair, we've got a pretty, I mean, you all saw the, the master plan. There's a lot we want to do. So hopefully we get the grant.
There's funds next year for, for Blair as well that we'll be utilizing, 2021.
I wish we could guarantee that two existing sidewalks could be upgraded to wider paths, which the city owns and obviously can't likely afford. We'll talk to them once we get the grant, get closer on bids and see where they are. But that would really make that park awesome, just to get all the trails consistent around. Create that walking circuit, I think would be used heavily.
There aren't too many donors who wants a Joe Blow memorial sidewalk.
They're hard to sell those hardscape projects. Right, right.
But we're doing well. I was just curious whether, what your wish list kind of extended to the. Okay. All right, we don't have anything to do on that. Now we have to talk about design, health and wellness planning and design.
So internally, staff have been planning for a potential new health and wellness facility since 2016. That involved doing a number of facility tours. And from those tours, we developed a preliminary program statement. We worked with MTD and their multimodal transit study that was led by Farnsworth. And from that work, we decided to ask Farnsworth to interview and provide a proposal to move us forward in our planning for a potential health and wellness facility in Urbana. And that proposal includes the review and refinement of our preliminary program statement, site and spatial analysis. They'll evaluate six to eight different sites, give us opinions, cost benefit analysis, basically. And then the spatial analysis is really evaluating from our program statement that they would refine what the facility would kind of size-wise need to be and how that would lay out. And from those items, they would create two conceptual design options and then bring together a stakeholder group who's kind of been part of the process for these number of years and with the MTD transit study as well. And review kind of the concepts, the site analysis, the refined program statement, and then start developing cost estimation and a pro forma and really help us evaluate ongoing maintenance and operating costs for either one of the conceptual designs. And then we have included it as well to have a public open house that would then review kind of our entire process, what stakeholders, the conceptual designs, and, you know, finalize a couple, two or three locations where this facility could potentially go. And you'll note in the proposal, the, the schedule's relatively quick. But we're anticipating a potential park grant in early 2020, January or February, I think is last we were hearing. So we would want to be able to have this study moving forward and then help us with that potential grant application. The proposal from Farnsworth is $44,500. From our 2019 general fund transfer, we had set aside $25,000 for a planning study for a health and wellness facility. The additional funds that we would need are currently in the 2018 capital general contingency. And we'd recommend awarding the additional 15% contingency in the amount of $6,675 with the contract for Farnsworth. I would note that this is also something that was brought out, as you know, in our strategic plan, and it's a pillar. And during the public review process, one of the main themes we had heard was the need for indoor recreation space and community health. This is getting us geared up in that direction.
Yep.
Hopefully you all had a chance to review the proposal, but Farnsworth brings a really dynamic team. They've got everything from landscape architects to architects to urban planners. They do have folks that could help with grant writing as well. It's not in the current proposal, but it could be an additional service we might consider. So that contingency could be something we'd look at for that. We were really impressed through their interview and some of the, the projects they cited that they've worked on. And they already get us pretty well. I mean, they gave us an example of a site analysis that was really, you know, I mean, it, it was already started. So I feel really good about this. And as Andy mentioned, you know, the park grant is really what, what's got us wanting to move pretty quickly on this. The fee is, I think, very reasonable. And I think part of that's because they are, they do have all the talent in-house to do this work.
Right.
A similar scope that we did for the outdoor pool was quite a bit more. But of course, they, they brought on other, other sub consultants.
Sure, right. And they've been, and they, and essentially, they've gotten, they've gotten ideas about this already with that initial, that initial look. So it's not, they're almost up to speed essentially on what's, on what's happening. So that makes a huge difference.
Essentially, almost two years previously. So it's, wasn't, wasn't difficult to at least zero in on who has the most information about what we're trying to do and our approach. Something I did want to add, we, as Derek mentioned, we do have a streamlined kind of approach. We don't have a lot of, you know, community meetings built in. But if there's time, the board would like, you know, to consider the information or have more up close, personal. Let us know. We could adjust, basically change our study session agendas to add it or exchange it and, you know, provide more opportunities for you. Again, what's driving us to get information is a proposed grant that could help us. You know, we, we can't guarantee that's going to happen for sure, but it would seem reasonable that we would work toward that as a goal. So we would be ready in that case. So again, we didn't anticipate three or four public meetings where people come and consider. And we're, we're making the assumption through the public input and the strategic plan process that we need a facility in Urbana. We don't have one. We need to do what we need to do to get one started, and this would be the path, you know, that would lead to that. So we didn't, you know, we're not asking people what they want, you know, in a facility. We've sort of already determined what our, at least draft program is. We've had enough feedback from the public to say, these are the important things. We've worked with Uptac in getting feedback of, gee, what would you like to see? Or as they joined us on tours, what, what impressed them. So we've sort of combined all of that information. Each time we test it with groups that we. Each time we test it with groups that we talk to, it's that reasonable nod of, yeah, that, that would get us moving in the right direction. So I just wanted to point that out. Normally, without any sort of time schedule, we might have built in more touchpoints. But let us know if you see it or want that. We can certainly talk about it at each meeting and in our reports. But just wanted to sort of mention that. It's, you know, we have our program established. We've got the firm on board. We're just moving quickly to get the information we need.
Yeah, more information, better, in my opinion, so. Alright, are we ready for a motion, or do we want to talk about it more?
I move to award services for health and wellness planning and design in the amount of forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And a fifteen percent contingency of six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to Farnsworth Group of Champaign, Illinois.
Second.
Alright, I don't think there's any more discussion, so let's start roll call.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Kado, here we are. Alright, Van.
Okay, in July, the board approved the, a donation agreement with Carl Hospital. That was a total amount of five hundred thousand dollars to be provided in five yearly installments. Prior to entering into that agreement, Corky and staff worked to outline a budget for the total donation. And outlining each year's expenditures. One of the expenditures in the first year is the recreation cargo van that recreation staff intend to use. I guess what I like to think of as an ice cream truck for recreational activities, taking it to underrepresented populations in a variety of areas. Potentially partnering with Carl Mobile Health Clinic. And, yeah, well, it'll be stocked with recreation equipment as well as part of the, the agreement. Once we received the funds, we developed a bid package and sent it to ten different dealerships. We had two responses with Bob Writings of Taylorville as the low bid at thirty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. The outlined budget from the donation provided for forty-two thousand dollars, that was then transferred to our two thousand and nineteen capital. Any remaining funds that we'll have after our purchase of the recreation van. Will then used to help supply the vehicle, do a graphics wrap that obviously would. Yeah, and then storage shelving for all the equipment, obviously.
This is a cargo van here. You guys have probably seen the transit vehicles around town. They're a little bit taller. Yeah, that's, that's what we're thinking about. But just that, that is what.
That's what this is. So is that why there were so few bids? I was really, because it's not every, you're running the mill. Even red truck sort of van.
Of the hundred thousand for the first year donation, fifty thousand is for getting the van ready. To get buying it, wrapping it, getting it supplied, so that's where we're at.
And we anticipate, if you award the, the purchase or approve of the purchase, the delivery probably would not happen until March. Would be my guess, February or March. But we'll work to start being ready on our end with the design, with marketing. And knowing exactly what specifications are needed. The graphics and the shelving are not something that's provided with the bid. It's something that we'll do after we purchase it, so we'll start investigating on options for storage and graphics here shortly.
I like the ice cream truck comparison. I think that's exactly what it's going to be. It's just such a good idea.
It's going to be a game changer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The outreach and, you know, and also for existing events and things we do, it'll definitely have potential for use.
Andy, Andy mentioned Carl, but we'll also have Public Health with us.
Yeah.
And they'll be doing lunches and that kind of stuff, kind of like what we did this summer.
Right.
Without the van, where on Tuesdays, we went to Crestview, and Thursdays, we're at Victory. And Public Health was there with lunches for the kids.
But that, that's not something we have to transport, right, that they, they.
Transport.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep.
I think it's a, I can't wait to see it. I'm going to buy a little bell and one of those, you know, twinkly music things to go on the top. Although these days, it might have to be something like a, you know, air horn. Alright, does anybody want to talk anymore about it, or do we want to make a motion? What, where are we?
I move to award the bid of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for a twenty twenty cargo van. With the options of, options one through six to Bob Writings of Taylorville, Illinois.
Second.
Alright, I don't think we need to discuss, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to discuss anymore, so roll call?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Kado, three ayes. Alright, F, Roger, that's you.
Okay, my intent in pulling ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh nine, authorizing disposal. Sale of personal property from the consent agenda was to, I'm, I'm planning on moving to postpone. Action on that ordinance to the November meeting. And my reason for doing so is to give the board a little bit more opportunity. To talk about the item in Exhibit B and the process on, on how that was arrived at. So that was, that was it.
Now, could we divide up and, and do, approve A tonight?
I was, I was going to.
Oh, okay.
I was going to, to, to ask a question. Is, is, is there any problem with Exhibit A waiting a month? With the items on Exhibit A waiting a month?
The contents and building materials?
That's true, yeah.
Because if, if there is, then what I could do is move to delete the, the part that says junk the items listed on Exhibit B. From the motion and then go forward with it, with the ordinance. Would that be preferable?
Is that better?
Okay, alright. Then I move to delete the words junk the items listed on Exhibit B. From ordinance number twenty nineteen dash oh nine, ordinance authorizing disposal slash sale of personal property. With my intention of moving that deleted item to the November meeting.
Just a few questions. What, what additional information would we bring to you, or is?
No, it's not, I don't think any additional information. I think it's just that the whole board needs to, to have a look at it, if that was the idea. Yep. So, are you willing to second it, or you?
Oh, right, sorry.
Oh, that's alright. Usually, there's more competition for the seconds, but tonight it's kind of a tag team. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. I think we just.
I had a question. Do, do we want to put it on the same format or handle it in a different way? I just didn't know. Is it?
Same format would be fine.
Just to make sure we have a quorum, is that the issue?
Make sure we have a quorum, and I think, give us a chance at the study session to, to, to discuss it.
Yep, yep.
I think, I think that's the main thing, because probably more than the, the, than the item itself. Is, is a matter of concern for, for at least one board member.
Right, anything more? Alright, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I heard three ayes. That's it. We've reached the end of our new business. Comments from commissioners?
Yes, I would just, I want to really commend the Anita Purvis staff and anybody else that was involved in the BioBlitz. As a citizen scientist that, that had a very small role in that, it was extremely well-run. It was exciting to see so many scientists involved. It was wonderful to see children that were incorporated into the, into the process. And I thought that was very well done. I got lots and lots of comments on my Facebook page from a number of people who were involved in that. That, that said what, what a great job and what good things it said about the Urbana Park District, so, thank you.
And I would just like to commend the foundation for bringing new and innovative ideas. In which we were able to raise two thousand dollars for youth scholarships. I know we've had monies, you know. Checks have been written before at the, at the Jazz Walk event, but this was specifically for youth scholarships. I assume you, those will go, be well-used.
Yep, yep.
It was a fun game to spin.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, and it was, it was nice. There were so many people there. That was, yeah, I think we're, it's kind of catching on and people realize that it's good. And we're doing good things. Alright, I think if that's it, if nobody else has anything to say, then. Not even quarter to nine, we're done.
Good deal.
Do you want to say now?
Oh, I, well, exercise my wrist a little.
Here, I have a blue. Do you have blue? Is yours blue? Of course not.
Okay, that's a, that's a holdup.
That way you can see it.